Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the school committee meeting of Tuesday, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. First on this evening's agenda, we will be looking for two votes to approve two sets of minutes. First, for the meeting minutes of our August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting, we'll be entertaining a motion.
Motion.
Go ahead, Emily.
Motion.
We have a motion by Ms. Davidson.
Second.
And a second by Ms. Hennessy. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is a vote. Thank you very much. Next, we'll be looking for approval of the meeting minutes of August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. We'll be entertaining a motion.
Motion.
Second.
We have motion and a second. All those in favor?
I have to abstain.
We have three votes and one abstention. Thank you very much, ladies. That is a vote. Seeing nothing under Communications, we'll move on to Audience. We have tonight with us Rebecca Kidwell, who is the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, Instruction, Assessment, and Professional Development. Welcome, Ms. Kidwell.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here with you this evening. I am so excited to be here. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. And thank you for the larger opportunity, especially to Dr. Cron for welcoming me to the Rockland School District in this role. I'm very excited. I've been on the job for about a month now, and the thing that sticks out most in my mind is having heard Dr. Cron call this a world-class school system. And I can say from the conversations that I've had with people over the last month, and that I'll continue to have throughout this entire fall, he's right. So I really want to thank Ms. Forlisi, who is here this evening as well, and has been acting in this role previously, for all of the work and foundation that she has laid to bring our schools together, to really build a strong curriculum and professional development system. And I look forward to continuing that work. I've started that work by meeting with faculty, staff, administrators, department heads, trying to learn everything I can about the school system, and those meetings will continue through the fall. In that time, I've learned about your radio station, your amazing art department, everything your music department is trying to do, robotics, athletics, the grant that follows me on the agenda, the daycare that is truly unique to this town, the summer programs. I got to start in August, so I actually got to see your summer programs in action before those finished up. The amazing improvements to facilities, including the topping-off ceremony today at the new Phelps Elementary. And I've gotten to learn how committed the people on your team are to making this a great place for kids. I've talked with families who are so happy to have their kids back in school with us this year, so happy to see all of the enthusiastic staff members who are there to greet their kids as we start this school year, from bus drivers to cafeteria workers to custodians. The conversations I've had are so universally positive about the things that we're doing here. And are there areas where we'll continue to grow and grow together? Absolutely. Are there goals that I look forward to helping you as a school system, a school committee, as faculties, as students, as families, reach? Absolutely. But I cannot say enough good things about the place that you're in already, and how pleased and honored I feel to walk into this role with you all. So in the weeks to come, I look forward to sitting with each of you on the school committee to talk with you more about your hopes and priorities for the system, and what you feel the community really elected you to do, and what they want to see from us. I also look forward to meeting with town officials, police, fire, community organizations, parent advisory groups. I'm really fortunate to be able to spend a lot of time this fall getting to know this town well, getting to know this town's needs and interests, and learning how we can best advocate for and prioritize what this town wants from their schools. So, thank you, and I'm so glad to be part of the Bulldog Team.
Thank you. Thank you for being with us and welcome. In the short time I've gotten to know you, it's been a real pleasure. Your positivity and great attitude is very welcome and sort of aligns with what's going on with the rest of everything here. Everyone's really positive, and despite a sort of tough eighteen months previous, everyone's really psyched to be back to a great school year, and it's really great to have you on board with us. Any questions or comments from the committee?
I just also wanted to welcome you. We will be sad to see Ms. Forlisi leave us in December, but we're happy that you're here to fill her shoes. I look forward to working with you. I was going to say I'd like to sit with you and just have conversation. I think part of you doing what we need us to do is us sort of working as a team and building that relationship, so I look forward to sitting with you and getting that started.
Anyone? Anyone else? Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Welcome. Look forward to seeing you all the time around here.
Absolutely.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up under Audience, we're lucky to have with us tonight Cheryl Shipper and Laura Strako for Rogers Middle School Life Science Grant from Massachusetts Life Science Center. They're here to tell us a little bit about that, and welcome.
Thank you. I'll lower this. Thank you for having us here tonight. I am so excited to tell you about this grant that we could absolutely not have in this district if it weren't for the wonderful Laura Strako, eighth-grade science teacher. So just to tell you about the timeline a little bit, in early March, Laura came to me and asked what I thought about this grant. And she was looking for available money, and she's very good at that. And she found this grant, which required a rather extensive application process. And there were a few things she needed to do, we needed to do, and we needed to demonstrate ourselves as an at-risk community, or a high-needs community, I should say. We needed to demonstrate that we would have alignment between the middle school and the high school if we were to receive the money, and we needed to present some possible ideas. To backtrack a little bit, the MLSC is an organization that, I think it's safe to say, aims to ensure that there will be people going into the life sciences for careers. So that's why they give this money out, to ensure there are future life scientists. So again, this was the beginning of March. Laura and I met, we talked it through, and we talked to Colleen Forlisi to make sure that we had, you know, district support to move forward with it. And then Laura began her work of putting this beast of a thing together on her own time, you know, at night and on the weekends, and put together this application process in a very short time. By the end of the month, it was put together. And three months later, end of June, we found out we got it. So that is two hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. A hundred and fifty thousand is equipment, supplies, materials, and technology. And approximately forty thousand is for PD to support the implementation of those things. So we have through the end of this school year to spend the bulk of the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then we have through the end of next year to use it for the PD. So we're super excited about it. We have all sorts of exciting things coming up, and I'd love to introduce Laura to talk a little bit more detail.
Thanks. Thank you all so much for giving us this opportunity, especially for the superintendent's office, for the administration office, as well as for Angela Armstrong at the high school, the head of the science department, who was instrumental in helping pull this all together in such a short amount of time. I'd like to backtrack a little bit with how we began last year. In order to learn science, you have to do science. How in the world are we going to do that in a pandemic? When we had to sanitize items and look out for items, and we had no idea. But we are so grateful to the Rockland Education Foundation, who funded several of our current curriculum lab aids, their at-home kits, where we didn't have the students do them at home, we had them do them during their cohort weeks in the classroom, where every student could do every part of a scientific activity. And what we found, students loved science. They loved doing it and experimenting and coming up with their own conclusions and getting their hands dirty, for a back of another word. Well, that's why I started looking for additional funding, because we really stumbled on something. Normally, students would be working in groups of three, four, sometimes five students. But this way, they were able to participate in the whole activity. So I did, as Cheryl Shipper said, I stumbled on the Massachusetts Life Science Center grant, and it looked like exactly what we needed in Rockland. It gave us the opportunity to work at the middle school as a team, and at the high school as a team, but to work together, so that we can vertically align a curriculum so what students begin to see as soon as they begin at John W. Rogers, what they'll continue to see and get used to as they get to the high school. The Life Science Center wants students to become engaged and further their education in life sciences. This is what that grant will do. It's going to fund individual kits so that we can continue to do the pilots that the Rockland Education Foundation system funded, but at a larger level across all grade levels. It will allow us to bring in digital microscopes with imagers, so that fifth graders can get excited about what they're seeing in Petri dishes. We have prepared slides that are coming in, stereoscopes for the high school, and mini PCR, and gel electrophoresis. Some of these activities are things that may not get seen normally until you get to college. We need to encourage students to start thinking now about what the future holds. Just last week, I said to my students, there are careers that you'll be able to go into that don't even exist. They're not even in someone's imagination yet. That's how fast life science is going to move. And where we are in Massachusetts, we're at the forefront. We have some of the best opportunities in technology, in hospitals here. So we need to get students excited, and I'm so glad that we just got word that we can start spending and bringing in some of this wonderful technology, equipment, and supplies to just, as you have said, to make this the world-class school district that I know it can become. So thank you all so very much.
Thank you so very much. You know, it's tough to expect kids in a school district to be excited about learning if their instructors and their teachers and their administrators aren't excited about educating. And the excitement about it is just, it's palpable in both of you. You can see how excited you are about teaching our kids, about this grant, about taking the initiative to write it. Congratulations. Thank you. Great work. This is something that is not a small deal. I think it's for everybody should know that. One hundred and ninety thousand dollars for enrichment going to our schools is a big, big deal, and it simply would not have happened without you. Thank you on behalf of my kids, and all the other kids that are going to be going to school here. This is a world-class school district. I really do believe it. And I think what you said earlier about, and what you've said before here, that in Rockland Public Schools, we're educating our students for careers that don't exist yet. And the fact that we recognize that and strive for that is impressive and amazing, and I think it's a great standard for all of us to have. So I'm excited about this grant, and I'm excited about the fact that you did the work to do it. I'm excited for all of it. Great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Other comments and questions?
I would like to say I had the pleasure of briefly meeting you last week at the back-to-school night. I'm an eighth grader this year in the middle school, and I just, it's like the caliber of teacher that we have here at RPS, this is the prime example, and that we get to sit here and be the face of this type of a teacher is incredible. It's just an outstanding grant that you received, but it's more outstanding that you wanted to get it, and that you wanted to do this for our kids in our town, my kid particularly. So I'm getting emotional because I'm so excited. I'm a Bulldog myself, and I just think this is awesome. This is who we have in these schools. It doesn't get better than that. So thank you very much for putting your whole heart into our kids here in this town. We appreciate it.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you. I mean, Jill said it very nicely. My daughter was with you last year, and my son is in seventh grade, so excited to see the curriculum, you know, take shape and get them excited about science. I think the hands-on aspect is spot-on. It was hard to do science virtually, but excited for this in-person school year. So thank you so much. Jill Andian said it, you know, we're so thankful that you take the extra step, and I think we see that across the whole school district, so thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Cron?
I've said this a few times, but I think it's a great opportunity to point out that the Rockland Education Foundation does much more for the district than provide twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars a year in grants.
For sure.
They provide opportunity, vision, so it's a great time to thank them. So thank you to Regina Quirk and Dick Phelps and all of the founding members of that phenomenal organization. But I also think of Scott McKinley when I heard you speaking, Laura, your incredibly articulate description of what took place. Thank you for that. I can, I just think of Scott McKinley, who said to me many smart things, but one thing that I'll never forget is he said, "The greatest loss in life is the loss of enthusiasm." And I think, Dan, you hit it on the head. Your enthusiasm for this work is palpable. Thank you. You're the one doing the work. We sit in the office, we have meetings about the work, but you're the one who's actually in the classroom, inspiring our children, and we appreciate you very, very much.
Thank you so much.
So you represent not just you, but all of the teachers in the Rockland Public Schools, because I know that the passion that they, I see it every day. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being with us tonight, and thanks for everything. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, really. Next on our agenda, I'll preface it every now and again, not always, but every now and again, we get a couple of agenda items back-to-back that are really feel-good agenda items. Thank you again. That's really great news for Rockland Schools. And next on our agenda tonight, we have a graduate of Rockland Schools, we've got an employee of Rockland Schools, we have a friend to me, to everyone here, I think to pretty much everybody in Rockland, to most people who have ever been in and out of Fenway Park any time in the last thirty years. We're really blessed to have with us tonight my friend and yours, Peter Tolan, who has been a custodian here with us in Rockland Schools. For how many years, Pete?
Oh, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven years, and he's been with, today celebrating his thirtieth, well, today and recently celebrating his thirtieth anniversary with the Boston Red Sox. And Pete, come on in, welcome. We want to hear a little bit about this and hear a little bit about what's the latest, greatest with you and with the Red Sox. Welcome, Pete.
Okay, thank you. We started six years ago when they got my twenty-fifth recognition. It was a base, and for thirty years, they give you a uniform. So I've been here since nineteen ninety-one, two-time Ticket Taker of the Year in two thousand eight, two thousand twelve. I've witnessed all four World Series in person in two thousand four, two thousand seven, two thousand thirteen, two thousand eighteen, and I've seen the rest of the Twins, two playoff series in New York in two thousand four and two thousand eighteen.
So anybody who knows Pete or happens to follow Pete on social media, Pete is like the Carmen Sandiego of the sports world. If there's a Super Bowl or a great event, Pete is always there. If you're going to go to the Red Sox game, Pete, of course, is always there, and he's such a welcome sight for any of us from Rockland to see him. And Pete, I'm really excited for you. Can you tell, and I'm sure the committee head would like to congratulate you, and they have some questions too, but I know you just said some of the great things that you've seen, and I just wonder, what is your favorite memory that you have in all your years working at Fenway Park?
Probably the, that's a tough one, you know. Probably that first World Series, two thousand four.
Yeah.
You know, coming back from three-oh down, and then, you know, they win game four, and then game five is a Monday afternoon game. They win that, and now I gotta, now I gotta find a hotel room, get on the train, go down to New York for game, for game six, and then they win game six, and I guess, I was lucky enough to stay in, you know, Times Square, so I stayed for game seven. They won game seven, came home, then I had to think about the World Series. I was supposed to go to PC Notre Dame that weekend with my dad. One of my relatives fortunately was going, so you know, we had to go down to Rhode Island and gave them tickets, and while I was down there, I was able to get a flight to St. Louis to leave that Tuesday, and you know, I had to stay next to me because I swept, but that was just an unbelievable experience out there in St. Louis, and I was also out there in two thousand thirteen as well, so.
That's great. Any other questions, comments from the committee? I'm sure you guys have something to say to Pete.
No, I would just like to say congratulations on your thirty years of service to the Red Sox. I'm sure you're not retiring anytime soon from there, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I was going to say the same thing. Congratulations, and Emily said it exactly how I was going to say it. I'm sure you're far from done. We're lucky to have you here.
Yeah, I'll be back in a few more years for the thirty-fifth gift, and I know forty years is two grandstands, it's in, I know for fifty, they get to go to any major league ballpark you want, you know, and.
Well, I'm hoping my kids take me there when I'm an old man, and we get to still see you there, because it's great to see a rock, familiar Rockland face. And Pete, is it usually you're on Yawkey, well, it's not Yawkey Way anymore.
I'm usually on Jersey Street.
Jersey Street, yeah, right.
I'm usually out there the whole game, so.
Yeah, so that's usually where you can find Pete, if anybody's from Rockland and going in to catch a Red Sox game, you want to say hi to a nice, familiar Rockland face. And Pete, again, congratulations. We're proud of you. We're proud of you. You're the best part of Rockland, man. Thanks.
Thanks very much.
Thanks for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda is item four, is our superintendent's report. Turn it over to Dr. Cron.
It's going to be far less entertaining.
No awards or.
Okay, first, I'd just like to give a very brief busing update. I want to thank folks in our office for their incredible work over the past month and a half, getting all the buses together. We are, we have recently, over the past week or so, had to reroute Bus Ten, the Esten Bus, and we went, basically had to, over the weekend, make fifty phone calls to parents to let them know of some changes, but those changes were made by Ms. Hackett, and so that we could reduce the volume on the buses and reduce the amount of time that the kids are on the buses. So I want to thank the public for being flexible and understanding, and I want to thank the folks in my office for their incredible work. As of today, we have nine hundred and forty-four daily bus riders. This is three hundred more than previous years. So as you know, we're offering buses for free this year. I think that has contributed a bit, but one of the things that having more students on buses really helps with is pickup and drop-off, especially at our elementaries, especially at Memorial Park with the construction. So we appreciate having more kids on the buses. It's actually, I think it's safer to have them on the buses, so we appreciate that. I want to thank First Student, who's done an excellent job working with us. I never thought there'd be a day that I'd be sitting here thanking First Student, the bus company, but I am, and they've been great to work with, so Jane tells me, so I believe her. They've done a great job keeping drivers, as you know from the news, everyone's looking for drivers. We have eleven buses with ten current drivers and one who's finishing training today or tomorrow or shortly, so thank you for that. Do you have anything you want to add about that?
I'd just like to thank Liz Norris and Noel Novio, who have really done the yeoman's work on this during the transition in our office, and just reiterate that First Student has been incredibly committed to this district, and I think we've gone a long way in working with our relationship with them, but it's really been Liz and Noel who have really done the yeoman's work, as have the secretaries in having to deal with all the changes that have come through at all levels, at both the elementary, the middle school, and the high school. It's been bumpy, but I would put us up against any other district, especially in the immediate area, for how well it's going.
Who's competitive?
Not me.
No. No, not at all. Okay. The next thing I'd like to report on briefly is we will be sending out tonight after this meeting, a survey to everyone. And when I say everyone, I mean everyone in Rockland, faculty, staff, students, families, the community, business owners, everyone, and it is the S R Three Survey. So we are receiving some federal money. It's required. It's a part of the American Rescue Plan Act, and it's provided states' support and our schools to safely reopen. So part of the, part of the deal with receiving this money is that we consult with the public. So we are consulting with the public with the survey, so I would ask the community to take a few minutes to respond to this survey. It will come out, tonight we'll be sending it out, and it will be posted on the website, and it will be available until Monday, September twentieth. So we will be closing the survey Monday, September twentieth. And again, it's giving input as to how we will spend these funds, and the primary goal of the funds is to take care of any learning delays that we may have had because of last year, and to help us get started again after such a long, interesting deviation from standard operating procedure. So we're very pleased to have the funds, and I just wanted to announce that survey. I am also happy to announce that our before-and-after-school programs are up and running at the elementary school, and they have been from day one. That's no small feat. I want to thank Marissa Baldassare, who's done a phenomenal job getting those programs up. I do want to let middle school parents know that we are working on a program for grades five and six. A survey was done, so we have some survey information. Where we're having trouble is staffing it. We're having trouble staffing it. So we're going to start having individual conversations with people and trying to talk them into doing this work after school, but we have had trouble staffing the before-and-after school program at the middle school, so that's slowed us down just a little bit. But we also have homework clubs, book clubs, art club, drama, that's all happening at the middle school already, but we are trying to get a before-and-after-school program in place for those parents to help out. Just a moment about, well, I'll do this one first. Our box program, our morning athletic program in the elementary will be starting soon. We're very excited about that. I would also like to mention the topping-off ceremony that was held this morning. It was, to me, surreal, to stand in front of that structure. It's something that we've been working on together now for seven years, and when I say together, I mean together, everyone. The town, we couldn't have done it without those who came out and voted. Everything, it's just been a team effort. And the quality of team that we have in place on the construction side is also, I think, admirable. SMMA and PMA are top-shelf professional organizations. Our construction site is neat and tidy and clean. The owner of the construction company was on-site today and told me repeatedly how committed he is to this project and to the people of Rockland. I once again reiterated to him that one of my pet peeves is going to be that when furniture and everything is delivered toward the end of this project, that not a single item walk off the job site. I do not, I want the public to know that we appreciate, respect, and are very careful stewards of their money, and we will have a very, very tight process in place for all deliveries and drop-offs and all of that stuff. It's sort of a pet peeve of mine, I don't want to see a single Xbox walk off the job site. So we will have a very tight process in place. Next item, a lot to say today. Very happy that students are, that our lunches are back. The kids are having, you know, a variety again. They're having fresh vegetables and fruits, and I want to thank Adele Leonard and all of our cafeteria staff for doing such a terrific job. It's great to see the kids enjoying healthy lunches, you know, again. Now, not to say that last year was unhealthy, but it's better this year, so I'm just glad to see things returning to normal. Also thrilled to see our kids playing sports again. It's just, it makes such a difference in their lives, and I'm so pleased to see our sports programs up and running again. I would also like to point out that the ceiling repair and the daycare has been completed. Very important, I think, for the public to know that we have, you know, a gentleman named Mark Shum, who is our Director of Facilities, and he is such a talented individual that we didn't need to hire a contractor, because he did it. And we did a repair in that building for a fraction, a fraction, of what we would have had to spend had we done it with contractors. So I want to thank Mark, I want to thank his team for their work, and that is keeping our daycare open. This was funded, I believe, through Town Fund. This was funded, I believe, through town funds.
Correct.
We had originally agreed to pay for that because it's a school program. But the town, again, in the spirit of cooperation, has come through and they funded that. So we want to thank them again for their partnership. The one, one other thing, well, two other things. This morning, we had our first in-person senior administration meeting since the end of February 2020. So we had our first in-person senior admin meeting. 19? Since 2019. And it was one of the better meetings that I can ever remember. Very positive. The principals are excited. And I want to, I want to repeat what I said to them at the end of this meeting. When I look around that table, I think about the tasks and responsibilities that they were asked to carry last year. And they were many. And in turn, they turned to each one of their teachers and custodians and cafeteria workers and asked them to do things that they had never done before. And still today, the enthusiasm in that room was incredible. So I am so proud of them, and I wanted them to know that I know how hard they have been working and how hard they will work. Because we have a lot of work to do. But I, it was a very, very good morning. Because we left that and we went to the topping off ceremony, so it's just been a tremendous day. And then I would like to conclude my very long superintendent's report by thanking once again Donna Lamb, our Executive Secretary. This is Donna's last meeting. She's retiring. We love her. We will miss her. We appreciate her work. As you know, there are many, many parts to the machine that make this place work. And I will tell you that Donna is a huge part of that. And we will miss her, and we will miss you, and we thank you for your years of service. And that is my report for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Cron, for that substantive and well-thought-out superintendent's report.
I can go on?
If I can start from the beginning, I have a lot of comments about it.
Okay.
I was going to say, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, so, and I'll turn it over to everyone else in just a second. But first of all, first of all, we talked about opening of school. We talked about busing. Talked a little bit about the changes that happened in bus routes. My family was one of the families that was affected by the change. We received a phone call from Mrs. McNeil very timely and let us know what would be happening. When my little guy got on the bus, the bus was perfectly on time. Everything's run smooth as silk so far. On a couple of occasions, I've had the opportunity to drive my middle schoolers, that's plural now this year, up to school for drop off. And despite painting of crosswalks out front, despite other gatherings going on out front, despite a new school being built, despite multiple drop offs happening, things were not only planned very well. I saw Officer Schnebel out there organizing and making sure he was directing, along with principals being out there to welcome. And I think most importantly, and most able to make it all work, families being patient and families following the rules and the traffic patterns and sort of everybody knowing what to do and where to go. And sort of a perfect storm has really sort of worked out really well. Everyone seems to be, at least to my experience, I'm sure there have been some bumps. But to my experience, things seem to be moving very smoothly as far as busing and as far as getting kids to school. And I know that that's a lot of work and a profound exercise, especially given all the challenges that we have sort of going on right now. Also, you talked a little bit about this morning's topping off ceremony. Quite honestly, before this week, I didn't really know what a topping off ceremony was. I've heard of groundbreaking ceremonies, but the topping off ceremony to me was a little bit more special, a little bit, a whole lot more memorable. The idea being that you're placing the last piece of steel in the structure theoretically at the top with a Christmas tree on top is a nod to a Scandinavian tradition that I learned today. It was a wonderful, wonderful event. As Alan said, it was hard not to have goosebumps at what of a, what an accomplishment that this is for our entire community. And how many generations of children will start their educational careers there and they will learn and grow and thrive in that building. And just being able to look and now see it come together for so long. We've looked at it on maps and overhead conceptual drawings. But now to sort of see it, see with your own eyes how it's orientated and how this wonderful campus from the school, from the senior center all the way up to Union Street is actually going to look. It's hard not to be really very excited about it. And it's hard not to be struck by just how quickly and how efficiently this thing is going up. As Alan said, this has been a process that started seven years ago, a long time ago, from a statement of interest from John Ratchlis in a previous school committee that long ago, to going to MSBA, to being there today. And speaking of MSBA, we had Mr. Jack McCarthy there with us, the head of MSBA Today. And we talked quite a bit about what a great organization they are. And I think, Alan, you talked about as far as bureaucracies go, that it's about as well-run of a bureaucracy as you can possibly have. Our experience and our community's experience with MSBA really has been no exception to that. It's really remarkable what they've been able to do in supporting us in building that school. I'd also like to thank Representative DeCoste and Senator Keenan for being there with us today to commemorate the occasion. It was just a really special day for everybody. But no, it wasn't really as special for anybody except, it was most special, I should say, I hope anyway, for the Phelps family. It was really great to see Mr. Phelps there today. Been a little while since I seen him, and it was great to see their whole family there together to really mark this really great occasion for our community. Because I know, for me anyway, their name being on that school is a bit of sort of a beacon for kids. I think that's what we want our kids to grow up to be like, what they want, what we want them to give back as, you know, community members and examples to children and giving back. It just was a really feel-good experience and one I think that we all needed today. So I think WRPS recorded it today too, correct?
They did, they did.
So hopefully, we'll have the opportunity in the community for everyone to take a look at that and to see that. And I may be missing something that I wanted to comment on in your report. But most importantly, I also wanted to thank Donna Lamb. I've gotten to know Donna Lamb quite a bit over the last several years. And Donna's been just absolutely on point as far as helping out in the office and being Executive Secretary there in the administrative offices. And, you know, you come in and you go out, and the constant was always Donna with a smile always being there. When I need to come in to sign a warrant or to be there, and I'm going to miss you, Donna. It's going to be different not having you there in that office. But I know that you probably got some great goals and still great things left to do and lots of stuff to enjoy. And I hope you enjoy every minute of it, but leave there be no doubt that we're going to miss you around here. Thank you. And with that, I'll turn it over to comments and questions from the committee.
Sure. Very eloquent, Dan, as always. Mine are slightly specific. A lot of great information and a lot of great things happening in the first couple of weeks of us going back to school. The before and after programs, I know my kids have used those in the past. How do the numbers look? Are we more than we used to be in the past years? Are we seeing that enrollment?
I've seen, when I've been, there's been anywhere from between 13 and 20 kids in most of the before-school programs. Do we have more specific numbers?
Yes, we're averaging between 45 and 50 total enrollment. On any given day, there's right around 25, which is at or above where we were in 2018, 2019.
Perfect. Yeah, I just was curious if people were using those programs again or if COVID was still keeping people sort of away from those before and after schools.
Well, I think it's very helpful for working, working families. So it's something that we know is very important. We want to make sure it's robust and fun for the kids, too.
Quick comment on that. You mentioned the box program.
Yeah.
Earlier on, for the elementary school kids. My youngest is now a second grader, and he'll be taking part in that. But my older two were, we call maybe high-energy kids. From the moment they wake up in the morning, the feet hit the floor, and off they go. And the box program was really great for them to be able to go and to be able to expend some energy, to have some sort of focused physical education and exercise. It was a great program for my kids, and I just want to encourage anybody at the elementary school level that has a chance to get their kids involved in that. Anyone else?
Another question probably for you, Jane. With ridership up on the buses, which is great, and I do think it's probably helping with some of the traffic patterns, and it being free, what's the impact to our budget for that? How are we covering that? I can't remember.
In a year where we were down 300 more, so assuming, I haven't run the numbers, but we used to bring in about $35,000 a year in transportation. We have not done so. We're not charging this year. However, through cooperation with the town, we have received some revenue replacement money through the AARP money with the town. And loss of bus receipts was part of that, which is why we were able to offer it this year for no cost. But we can't necessarily guarantee that that's going to be the case going forward.
Perfect. Thank you for sharing that with the community, so. And that's it? Thank you, Donna.
I wanted to also say 33 years here, Donna. It's remarkable to think that we've had you. We've been blessed with you for here that long. I know for myself, like Dan was saying, we go into the office to sign warrants and things like that. Even I've called you just, I need help with this. How do I do this? I'm going here. Where is this? We get invited to things. I don't know where we're going. I don't know who I'm supposed to be meeting there. You are just our right-hand lady, and you will be missed. I wish you luck in Maine. Don't forget that you're from Rockland. Make sure you come back and be our bulldog friend. But I myself will miss seeing your face in the office and here with us on School Committee. So we wish you luck in the future. Enjoy your retirement.
I just have a comment regarding the SR3 survey. Will that be posted on the app so people can find it there or is it just on the website?
No, we'll find a way to get it on the app.
And what about the town hall website? Because you need community members to.
It's a great idea. Yeah, it's a great idea. We'll get it posted there as well.
And then Donna, enjoy your retirement. It is well-deserved, and enjoy Maine.
Anything else? All right, thank you, everybody. Next up, item five on tonight's agenda is reports. For your information, we have our school newsletters for September. We have reports from, excuse me, newsletters from the Jefferson School, the Memorial Park School, the Rockland High School, and Rogers Middle School. I encourage everybody in every school to keep up with your newsletters. Lots of great information and very important and pertinent information in there every single time. Next under old business, item six, we have item A, which is COVID protocols. Turn it over to Dr. Cron.
I am going to turn this over to Jane Hackett, who has created a PowerPoint for tonight, by the way.
Good evening. I'd like to start with our, an update on our vaccination clinics. Through our partnership with the Social Hospital, we will have vaccinated 73 individuals by this Saturday. 53 of those were student age, and 23 were adults. Currently, we're working with the state to hold an additional clinic that can accommodate walk-in customers. So there will be more to come, but a huge shout out to Social Hospital, not just for this, but for our PCR testing program. I don't want it, there to be any reflection on Social Hospital that we're not going forward with them. It's simply that they're unable through state regulation to accommodate walk-ins, whereas the Commonwealth of Massachusetts can accommodate walk-ins. So our next clinic will accommodate walk-ins, and will be open to the entire community. It partially is a result of our vaccination clinic and individuals being proactive. You can see on this slide here, this is our new vaccination rate of individuals receiving one shot by age group. And then our total vaccination percentage of folks who are fully vaccinated. We have gone up 13% in our one dose at the 12 to 15 level. And we've gone up 6% in our 16 to 19-year-old vaccination rate. Vaccination rate as a community, is it 67% for one dose and 61% for fully vaccinated? So we are looking forward to working with the state to continue the progress in contributing to the vaccination of individuals in the town of Rockland. As we mentioned in our last two school committee meetings, we have applied for and have been accepted to the test and stay program. The test and stay program is up and running in Rockland. D.C. is aware that we are running it. We have received all of our supplies. We are still working through, the state is still working through some of their portal and technology issues. However, we are fully up and operating and able to keep students and staff in school. So a little bit more about this program is that the test and stay program is limited to those close contacts who are established in school. Students and staff can participate in all school activities. That's regular day and extracurricular activities as long as they comply with these three things. One, they have to be asymptomatic, and they have to self-monitor for 14 days whether or not they have any symptoms. Every morning, they come in and they take a rapid antigen test, which is administered by the school nurse. And if they receive a negative result, they can participate in all school activities. Parental consent is required one time for them to participate in that program. The students or staff involved in the test and stay program must wear masks at all times other than eating and drinking. We are clarifying with the Commonwealth whether or not that applies to outdoor sports. I do not have that answer, but we have asked that question. This program is being run at the building level with individual school nurses. Some, some school districts have sent out mask consent forms. We have chosen not to do that. We're getting consent forms on a case-by-case basis as the nurses and the principals do the contact tracing with the close contacts. They're talking to the families and using that consent form as part of the overall conversation of helping that family go through what they're going through once they're identified as a close contact.
Can I say one thing while you?
Yes.
Just very briefly, just to the public, I want to thank the public for not sending your children to school when they don't feel well. That's very, very important. And we can have the greatest program in place. We can have all of these, all of these mitigation strategies. But if children come to school sick, it could be devastating. So I want to thank Rockland parents for being so proactive and for calling us with any questions before you do send your child to school. And just want to tell you how critical that is to our success in this area. Sorry to interrupt.
It's good of you. We are also continuing our PCR testing program. This is for any student or staff member regardless of where you were exposed or your vaccination status. This is the program we ran last year. We will test anybody who wants to be tested. If you are symptomatic, we will test you. If the staff, if any staff or student becomes a close contact because they were exposed outside of the school setting, we will test you. We will test household members who are affected by COVID in any way. Please just simply contact your building nurse to schedule an appointment, and we will test you.
Usually the same day?
Usually the same day. It's 1:00 PM at the high school. So we do like to, the data entry and the portal requirements, it do not take that long. So we like to have it closed around 12:00, 12:30 each day, and then test. This slide has a lot of information on it, which is not yet, but it will have a lot of information on it. But I want to go through it each, one bullet at a time, which is a new skill that I learned with our new Assistant Superintendent today. Close contacts. The definition of a close contact has not changed since the spring. A close contact is any person within six feet of a positive case indoors for 15 minutes over a 24-hour period. So that's 15 minutes over a 24-hour period within six feet indoors. What that means for an individual close contact has to do with your vaccination status and where you were exposed. So close contacts who are established or exposed outside of the school setting may return to school eight days after exposure if they test negative on day five, six, or seven, and self-monitor for symptoms for 14 days, and we will test you. Okay, for free. That is, that is four days sooner, or seven days sooner than last year. It was 14 days. You're now, it's now seven days. Close contacts established in schools are different. If you're a close contact that was established in school, if you were vaccinated and you are asymptomatic, regardless of how close you were, all you have to do is self-monitor for 14 days. If you were masked and you were over three feet apart, all you have to do is self-monitor for 14 days. If you're masked and you're within three feet for 15 minutes, you can participate in this test and stay program and self-monitor for 14 days. The nurses, the building principals, and myself walk through each one of these exposures and help differentiate which category individuals fall into and work with their families with ramifications. ramifications. If you are unmasked and you're within six feet for 15 minutes, you can test and stay and self-monitor for 14 days. You can return on day eight if you have refused test-and-stay, but you still must test negative on day five, six, or seven and self-monitor for 14 days to do so. So we cannot require anyone to test, but if they refuse not to, they can still return on day eight if they test negative on day five, six, or seven, and again, we'll test you. If you're an unvaccinated close contact, regardless of where exposed, and you refuse any testing, you may return to school on day 11 if you're asymptomatic and you self-monitor for 14 days. That too is new. It used to, from the spring, it used to be the, you had to be out for 14 days. Now you can return on day 10 if you report as asymptomatic. Positive individuals also may return to school on day 11 after symptom onset or a positive test. If the symptoms have improved, then contact your building nurse to help differentiate what symptoms qualify for you to come. People can have lingering tiredness. There are a lot of things that you can continue to have that you can still come to school with. All right? So again, this is complicated. It's intricate. It's also simple in many ways, and the building nurses and the principals are very skilled in practice at doing this. And when there are any doubt, we put a little committee together, and we all get together with the families, and we make a joint decision.
Quick question. So bullets kind of two through four, it does not matter about your vaccination status?
That's, no, if you are vaccinated, you don't have to do anything unless you become symptomatic. Excellent question. Okay? It was like, how many negatives do I put in there? If you're not this, if you're not that, if you're not that.
Just to confirm?
Correct. If you are vaccinated, all you have to be is asymptomatic.
Okay.
You stay. If you are, if you are a close contact and you are vaccinated, your only obligation is to self-monitor for symptoms for 14 days. If you develop symptoms, tell your family and tell your building nurse and your doctor.
Yeah.
Okay? So good, excellent clarification. What we ask, what Dr. Cron just said, is please do not come into school if you're not feeling well, even if it's simple cold symptoms. Please contact your building nurse, and they will arrange for you to be tested. Please consent to test-and-stay if your student is identified as eligible. Please consider vaccination for yourself and household members if you have not already done so. If you have any questions on anything, please contact your building nurse or myself, Jane Hackett, at this email address. We do check our messages, check our emails throughout the weekend as often as we can. So that is all I have this evening. If anyone has any questions?
Yeah, a couple. How are we fixed for testing supplies?
Outstanding.
Okay.
Outstanding. And in fact, I got an email just before here that we're actually even getting additional PPE.
Excellent.
So we have all the testing kits I think that we will need through their expiration date, and we have enough PPP on hand that we have already purchased, but the state, the Commonwealth, is going to supplement what we have.
Great. Can you also talk a little bit about for kids that are at home on quarantine or not in school, what we're doing to service their educations while they're at home, particularly those kids with IEPs?
Well, we're treating at this point, we're treating them much the same as we would as with a kid who broke a leg. We're doing everything we can to keep them up with their curriculum, with their homework. I will tell you that we're much better equipped today than we were a year and a half ago because of COVID, so we're much more technology-friendly. The middle school and high school, we have iReady. We have iReady throughout the district, but iReady allows you to give individualized work to students at any time. As far as their IEPs go, we would be dealing with it on a case-by-case basis to deliver whatever services we possibly can. I'd like to be able to say we can offer online teaching and learning for this, but we do not have, we have deconstructed that wing of our operations and no longer have online teaching and learning as an option. We are getting very, very creative in many cases. Well, for example, we had two teachers who were out who asked to be Skyped into their classrooms. And so after some conversations, we gave permission for that to happen. But again, that's a teacher who is in the process of being tested and felt well enough and wanted to be connected to her classroom, so we're doing it that way. So in very, in a very roundabout way in answering your question, we're doing a lot of things to care for these kids, and our teachers so far have been exceptional. But we're, right now, it has not been a huge issue yet, which has been great because we worry about that happening. But at this point, we've been, we've been in very good shape with that.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is it right?
So that was my question as well, Mr. Biggins, but I did want to add, now that Dr. Cron has answered it, is we're also in better shape than we had been in years past because every child has a Chromebook, and we do have Google Classroom that now every child knows how to use. So it alleviates maybe mom and dad running up to the school to get photocopied paperwork and bringing it home and things like that, that they'll be able to just communicate with the teachers through their own emails and things like that. Hopefully that is helping, helps them.
There's a whole lot of, there's a whole lot of one-on-one work that goes on to solve these problems. There are, you know, the shipper on the phone over the weekend. It might be a teacher talking to a parent about how to deal with something, but there's a whole lot of above and beyond that goes on every day behind the scenes with this, and it really is what makes it work. I have incredible sympathy for families. If you wake up and your child isn't feeling well and you're supposed to go to work, I understand what a dilemma you're faced with. But again, I appreciate the consistency with which parents have picked up the phone and called the school and asked. And in many cases, in fact, in probably in the majority of cases, we've very quickly been able to test the student and get the student back to school. So I think you can tell we have a very highly efficient and effective program in place, so that's very, very helpful. But on top of it, we have teachers and staff who are willing to do anything to help. And, you know, I think Mr. Snable has dropped off work to students before in the cruiser, which probably really freaked them out. But that's, we're a small district. We really are. We're a small district, and we're dedicated to taking care of our families and our kids.
Right. And I think we need to remember that we are in COVID and, but our, we're here for education.
Yeah.
We don't want to leave any child behind.
No.
And not have them feel supported.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your hard work on that.
Ms. Hennessy?
Alluded to all the great work in the testing and, you know, the homework and all that stuff. Can you share what our current numbers look like for cases? And I know that we used to have the grid of staff out by school and everything, just to let the community know what does the state of COVID look like in our district right now?
Currently, today, we have six individuals out, two staff, one staff member positive, and three students in one daycare. A child out positive.
Pretty low numbers.
Yeah.
Need to knock on wood.
Knock on wood. Yeah, sorry. I hope I didn't jinx anything. But no, that's great to hear. Thank you. And I think that's a testament to the test-and-stay and all the other stuff we have going on.
How many tests have been administered?
For test-and-stay, we have had four, six, seven, eight families involved so far in test-and-stay. And I would put our PCR pace, pretty much on average, we're four to five tests a day right now with the PCRs at 1:00.
Have you run into any issues of parents not consenting to testing?
We have not.
That's good.
No, and it's really been the nurses, especially when I met with them today, yesterday. Mrs. Ryan in particular really felt the conversations over the consenting form and participating in test-and-stay. She was really, actually, she was really able to help a family. They needed help, and the time that the nurses are spending with these families, I think, is really, really valuable to their individual families. Because unfortunately, we're seeing more families be affected. It's not one within a household, it's all four in the household.
Right.
You know, over the course of two, three days, becoming ill.
And if, and for the public, you don't need to wait till Monday to contact us.
Correct.
We are actually doing this work on Saturdays and Sundays. So I want to thank Kathy Ryan and her team and Jane, obviously, for spearheading this. But as a, to the public, please don't wait. If you feel a symptom on Friday night, call us Saturday morning. Get, reach right out to us, and we'll get right on it.
When in doubt, reach out.
When in doubt.
Yeah, I like that.
I like it. Small t-shirt.
Make a t-shirt. Make a mask.
Any other comments or questions from the committee?
No.
All right. Well, next on tonight's agenda, under new business, we're going to talk a little bit about fundraisers. T-shirt idea would be another great. But we've got five different fundraisers to approve tonight. So the first one, and it will be five motions to approve each of them and five votes. The first one is from the Esten School PAC. They're going to be running a Name That Circle fundraiser in October. So first of all, we'll be looking for a motion and a second to approve that one.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next up, we'll be looking for four motions in four seconds for Rockland High School fundraisers. The volleyball team is going to be selling some candy bars, which is something that I can certainly get behind. Boys soccer and Student Government Council are doing a Snap Raise fundraiser. And can you tell me, I know that's a crowdfunding, is that something similar to like a GoFundMe, but maybe a little bit more appropriate for student sports? Is that sort of what that is?
I really don't.
Maria, our student representative.
Maria is nodding.
I have no idea.
So Maria, can you tell us a little bit about it?
So essentially, Snap Raise is you get emails of relatives, neighbors, family friends, and they can donate money to the organization. So it's more localized rather than a GoFundMe where anybody can
Great.
donate money. But it's pretty secure, I would say, because it's a student going to each individual person and asking for them to donate.
Still got to do the work, right, Maria? Great. Well, thank you for that. We wouldn't have had a clue without you here, right? And then one more fundraiser. The class of 2022 is going to be hosting a Chipotle night in October. That sounds great, too. So we'll be looking for four motions and four seconds to approve the Rockland High School fundraisers.
Four motions, four seconds?
All those in favor? Thank you very much. That is a vote. Last on tonight's agenda is public service announcements. We'll start to my, Ashley, why don't we start over way over my right with our student representative, Maria Palau? Go ahead, if you have anything to say or announcements that you'd like to make this evening.
The first two weeks of school have been going pretty great. Getting back to the swing of things has been somewhat of a challenge, but I think we're all pushing through. Some exciting things that are coming up are Pinkout Day and the Breast Cancer Walk, September 24th and 26th respectively. And then we also have Spirit Week and pep rally that we're planning currently, as well as the homecoming game and dance. So that's something exciting to look forward to this year.
Lots going on. How are you feeling as like the mood amongst your classes? Everyone sort of excited to be back? Does it feel like you're sort of back to normal routine despite the face masks and all that stuff?
Yeah. It's weird not like being off one week and on the other.
Yeah.
It's kind of tiring, like to get back into that.
Right.
But I think we're all pushing through.
Well, it is for anybody, I would, sure. I mean, for you guys, I mean, you haven't had a routine like this in almost two years. I know there's a lot of adults that are feeling the same thing, going back to work after being home for a long time. It's tough to get back into the swing of things, no doubt about it. But great job to all you guys for sticking through it and getting through it one day at a time, right? Great.
Another t-shirt.
Another t-shirt.
Nice. I bought mine.
This is Harrison.
I would just like to say it's great to hear about all the activities back happening in the halls, so I'm sure it's great to be back. So enjoy the year while you have it. That's it.
Great. Mrs. Maroni?
I feel like we've talked about everything I was going to talk about. We were going to talk about the topping off and Donna, and so I have nothing else to add.
Great. Mrs. Hennessy?
Sure. I think it's been reiterated, it's been a busy couple of weeks. I encourage all parents to get involved. Go to the open houses, join the PAC. I had the pleasure of going to the middle school one, even though I've been there a couple of years. But it was great to see Principal Shipper and the admin team and all the teachers excited to have the parents in the classrooms. The high school one is tomorrow, and I'm looking forward to going to check out all my freshman daughters' classrooms. And then also, join your PACs. There's a lot of great stuff going on at the elementary school. I know the PAC chairs have sort of turned over, but they're always looking for volunteers, both at the elementary school and the middle school. And then all I wanted to say is good luck, as all the fall sports have been kicking off. I think we've had some good wins in the high school teams, football, cross-country, soccer. So if you can, get out there and watch. It's exciting to be a parent on the sideline and getting to cheer for your kids again. So encourage the community to join us.
Thank you very much. And like Mrs. Maroni, we've talked quite a bit about what I was going to say in my public service announcements already, but just last couple of things. Congratulations to the Rockland High School football team, won their first game the other night, a resounding win over Cumberland, Rhode Island, here at the best place to watch a football game on the South Shore, at the Rockland Stadium. It was postponed, I know, because of a COVID exposure to the visiting team, so they had to postpone it a couple of days, but I think the final score was a 25-0. Is that right?
Sounds right.
It sounded, what a great, what a great turnout. And we hope for continued success from all of our fall sports and activities. Great job, everybody. And then just one other thing I'd like to announce, and if any of you are friends with me on social media, I've been pumping this out quite a bit in recent days. On October 2nd, there's a lot of, great group of Rockland folks, they're going to be having a fundraiser at Players Restaurant to support one of our own great family by the name of the O'Brien family, whose family's been touched by cancer, which is something that I know that's touched lots of our lives. The O'Brien family's a great family. They've got four kids in our school systems and our sports, and they go to class with my kids and yours and play with your kids and mine. And I know in Rockland, we pull together for each other. So if at any opportunity that anybody has the chance to stop by October 2nd or to contribute to a really great cause, feel free to reach out to me or anybody else planning that great event. That's all I've got for tonight. And at this point, I'm going to poll the committee to conclude our regularly scheduled school committee tonight to retire into executive session for the purpose of discussing a personnel grievance hearing, not to return to regular session. Mrs. Hennessy?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
And yes for me. That's it for tonight, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much, and God bless.